Again, welcome everyone. This is our emergency meeting September 18th, 2015. Calling this meeting the order. We're going to begin as customary with standing with a moment of silence, please.
Mr. Chair, dedicate this to those three that folks have lost their lives at this point. They're very good people, seriously missed.
Thank you. Sheriff, would you please do us the honors and lead us in the pledge?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item is item four. This is non-timed items 4.1. This is a discussion consideration of authorizing the purchasing agent and delegated assistant purchasing agents to engage independent contractors to perform services related to the valley fire, local emergency not to exceed $1 million. Scott, Lars, Matt, again, the introduction of this item. Are we going to defer direct to the department?
Those that are approaching, we're trying to identify authorities in existing county code and state law to allow staff to enter into contracts in the case of emergency and the limited. There's no specific authority for state of emergency. So the amount of work that probably works needs to perform to recover from this event exceeds existing authorities. So that's why we proposed $1 million. And we're still trying to fine tune the competitive bidding requirements. And I think Lars has talked to an OES representative regarding FEMA requirements. So maybe we'll just turn over to them and see what they...
Well, I guess we'll get started in saying that, you know, we're overwhelmed with the amount of damage and we have a number of, we have over 4,000 feet of guardrail that needs to be replaced. We have trees that are damaged, burned. We have miles of roads with hazardous trees. We have a bin wall that was burned up on Socrates Mine Road, recently completed storm damage project that had timber lagging and it's all burned. And, you know, we've got some very immediate needs. And with that, you know, there's, we don't, I'll just say that we don't have all the answers in place. Matt has indicated we're still kind of working on getting through some of the FEMA requirements and CAL OES requirements with respect to competitive bidding and those types of things. I think the provisions are there to allow us to do what we want to do. We just need to make sure that whatever we do has the potential for reimbursement down the road. What I don't want to have happen is for us to go through an audit a few years from now and learn that we didn't follow some procedure and jeopardize that funding. So we're, it's dynamic. We're working with CAL OES right now and appreciate him being here. So with that, Lars may have some additional information.
Maybe it's best to just answer any questions. I have, I don't, other board members, two questions. What is the current ceiling that we're confronted with right now? And then obviously, we're now moving that ceiling to not exceed $1 million. What is the...
It's $175,000.
$175,000. I was in a conversation with Senator McGuire last night and he was indicating that there were state assistance. Now, if that's through OES or other support for working with Kathy Sederlin and Otters for proper accounting for those monies that are coming in through the state and actually federal government, hopeful of those resources here now to make sure that that accounting and that we're going to be compliant, make sure that, you know, there's reimbursements as Scott's referred to, it's important that that happens.
I think that the easiest answer is that yes, they are. But the issue here isn't so much is the money out there available to be grabbed? It's are, when we hire a contractor, are we following the right rules in order to be eligible to get that money? It's not they give it upfront and, you know, we spend it. We, we have to hire contractor X competitively or non-competitively, but ensuring if we do it non-competitively, we meet the requirements to still be eligible for funding. We're talking about the federal money here. And I'm going to note to Sean, that is correct. It's the federal requirements that we are concerned with here. It's not the state funding, it's the federal funding that ultimately we're concerned about.
And it's the reimbursement, which gets to not only the compliance with appropriate rules and policies for the retention of contractors, but that of proper accounting for the reimbursement.
Right. That FHWA has made a huge emphasis on procurement. You're seeing them reviewing and auditing projects throughout the state and agencies suffering some pretty significant penalties for what they've determined to be non-compliant procurement procedures. We're just, we're trying to make sure that we don't fall into that trap.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I could propose a recommendation. So on the memo, it states that it's recommended that your board per county code section 38.2 find that competitive bidding is waived because it's not in the public interest. Recommend amending that to read that it's, the normal county process is waived and that the, that the board delegate to staff authority to develop procedures in cooperation with CAL OES to ensure that the competitive bidding procedures that are developed by staff and CAL OES meet FEMA requirements.
Is that sample motion in memorandum? Is it uploaded in Granicus right now or?
It's not. Was there...
We'll need to see.
Was there, was the cover memo?
It's in Granicus.
Oh, it's in Granicus.
I don't have my...
It is in Granicus.
I'm straight from Calistoga and I don't have my, that...
Can we make copies?
It's not necessary for me as long as the other board members have. Thank you.
So we're kind of amending this on the fly. So it's the second paragraph down where it talks about delegating authority to the purchasing agent and delegated assistant purchasing agents, which are the department heads, to engage independent contractors to perform services, rate the valley fire not to exceed $1 million. Also recommend that your board find that competitive bidding is waived. And I would say the normal county competitive bidding process is waived. And then delegate to staff the authority to work with CAL OES to ensure that some, that the new competitive bidding requirements are developed to comply with FEMA standards.
I could interject there a little bit. The important part is to say it's the non-competitive portion that is concerning because if we can't, if we aren't willing, the board isn't willing to accept a delay associated with competitive procedures, that's the issue. Are we, are we in the state of emergency such that we can't, we can't wait to put together a bid package, send it out for a couple of weeks, you know, get bids back from contractors, which, you know, I would claim that we're not for hazardous trees falling, for guardrails that are down, bridges that are down. You know, that's, that's the issue that we can't, we can't stand, if you will, the delay that would, that would come from a competitive procedure.
Mr. Chair, is it possible to get the FEMA, I mean, just to come up here and...
We're going to work it out here. So they are overriding an issue to justify the waiver of the policy, normal bidding is that health and safety and that's, and then the time is of the essence. It's justified. Before I bring up, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, we don't have anything out of Granicus, just let you know.
Look, I would, when I'm not saying through a lot, we don't have the time to wait. This is an emergency and we need to act. Every T has to be drawn across every guy's eye. We don't want to be left on the strength for this. Thank you for the diligence to make sure that, to make sure that that does not happen. So we have OES folks here to help me couple...
Would you like to come on up? Would you like to sit here where we're more comfortable?
Captain Chairman, Captain Chief, I'm Shawn Smith. I'm with CAL OES and I'm the recovery liaison for this incident. So for the procurement standards, the increase of your, of the ability for your department heads to procure, there's no issue with that side of it. It's the public, it's the normal procurement process of doing the competitive bids. You could waive, as you guys talked about, you could waive your local procurement for the emergencies under health and safety. And then I can work, we can work within those guidelines, within the federal procurement guidelines to procure your needed, the needed resources to do repairs. It's just mostly we're going to have, there's going to be a lot of tricky issues for each project. I think each project would be independent. I don't know that I could say that each, that you could just do a blanket waiver or that the blanket waiver would pertain to every project. We'd have to look at them and work with these. Obviously, hazard trees are an issue. If we looked at your bin walls and bridges, if there's another route in, I know that when we look at the federal side, they like to see you try to at least take a look at the bidding process or somehow verify that the costs that are going to be incurred are reasonable and they're not getting, you're not getting gouged by a contractor. I'm not saying any contractor would gouge you, but these are the issues that FEMA has put forth in other disasters. And so my concern is to try to cover the FEMA concerns for that when we do, when they actually let the contracts up.
Speaking of things like the bin wall at Socrates, you could arguably say that our other employees in about 50 miles away, everyone, over there, that's not, they're not reasonable in any way, shape or form, from my estimation, but I don't get to make that final decision.
Yeah. No, and I would say 50 miles is not reasonable. If it was two miles or three miles...
There's nothing two or three miles away when it's just a helicopter. I mean, it just isn't. Not in that particular area.
Yeah, and that one, and like I said, each project has to be looked at independently. I couldn't say across the board all of them.
Well, that was a huge project. We just...
And then I hadn't even discussed it with the, with your public work folks, whether these are federal aid roads or not. On the federal aid roads, that we're going to have, I expect FHWA emergency relief for the federal aid roads, which changes procurement. You're not then meeting the FEMA procurement standards, you got to be that which is right. So I don't know, that's where each project's going to be independent, has to be independently looked at. But I would say the waiver of your local procurement policy for the emergency projects is not any trouble. That's normal. But we need to work within, within each project to make sure it meets the federal procurement standards.
Any other questions, comments from any staff? Sean, any members of the public like to speak on this item just before the board at this time? Anything else that we want to discuss or deliberate or suggest?
Federal experts out there. It sounds like we've got an expertise shortage here. And I just wonder if maybe what we should do is ratify this, each item in some manner so we improve as we go forward, as information comes in. I have an idea, you're going to have more information tomorrow than you do today, right?
Well, yeah, yes, with respect to...
Any, any of the projects. I mean, on a daily basis, you're going to gain information. I want to make sure we're not taking steps that are outside the parameters of the federal government as well, but I know it's true. So I don't know which way to go.
Or, I would say we're not experts, but I would say that we aren't newbies to the federal procurement process either. Many of the, most of the projects, the bridge projects, for example, that we use are federally funded that get, those federal funds get siphoned through the state and we are subject to federal procurement requirements. So, so we're, we're pretty versed.
But FEMA may have other requirements. Is that true or not?
Yes.
Is that the problem?
But, no, it's really not the problem. It's, we, we're not sure which, we're not sure which program we're going to need to comply with right at this very moment. And, and so what we're asking you for, your blessing, is to raise the level so that we can quickly respond to things following these guidelines.
Following those guidelines, but those guidelines are not for all of those programs. You don't know which you're going to apply to. See that there's no connection here. You don't know which program you're going to apply to, so are those guidelines for all of them?
Maybe to clarify that the 175 up to 1 million, the intent when we first started coming, coming down here was, the next board meeting was Tuesday. We didn't want to wait until Tuesday to get contractors onboard. It had nothing to do with competitive or non-competitive. It had to do with who has the awarding authority, anything over $175,000 on the board. That was the intent of coming down here. And if that still exists, competitive or non-competitive, that $1 million threshold or $175,000 threshold still exists. So that's, that's a separate issue from claiming that this is an emergency to waive competitive selection procedures or not. They're, they're two separate issues. If we turn a blind eye to competitive issues, then we, we need to wait until Tuesday for us to come to you with, with a contract. Or if it's approved, then between now and Tuesday, we start preparing a contract and Scott can enter into it, whether it's competitive or not. If it's non-competitive and we're following the federal guidelines, then we would, we would enter into it under Scott's authority, not yours.
Any other questions on that?
I'm prepared to offer the motions.
Anything else before we act?
Let me check that so it can stand as presented, Matt, if needed. Recommended action, review...
Are you going to take public comment?
I think you already...
Oh, do you?
Yeah.
Already did take public comment. Anybody? The only thing that I think we need to add on this is the waiver that be incorporated in the memorandum, correct, Matt? Waiver of normal bidding policies?
Well, I think so, unless I'm, I feel like I'm...
I think it would strengthen the case if we're making that, if we're going non-competitive, we're making that determination that it is an emergency that is worthy of non-competitive procedures. It certainly helps our case if the board has said, yes, this absolutely is an emergency. This, you know, the road opening, whatever it is that we are, we are dealing with, that it is worthy of getting a contractor onboard as soon as possible.
And I think to simplify it, which I know things get is complex, this is about just expanding, increase amount of money, ability of money from the $175,000 going to $1 million, allowing to arm you and strengthen you with some discretionary decisions to be made over this weekend to move it and then further strengthen that with the ability to take a posturing of a waiver of the competitive process because of time is of the essence and then to override the health and safety concerns of the community. So I think you have full board support, community support, entertain that motion with incorporation of the waiver of the bidding process.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I would move that we, due to the, normally the emergency that we're facing that will waive the competitive bidding processes, it would not benefit the county in any way we need to go for. We should do this as two motions, right?
Or we can roll it into a...
Roll it in, roll it in.
Authorize a person, agency...
In addition to that, authorize purchasing agent, delegated assistant purchasing agent to engage independent contractor on services related to the valley fire local emergency not to exceed $1 million.
We have a motion, second all there. I propose motion carries four with one absent. Thank you, gentlemen. Remain seated or whatever you prefer, I know. There may be some discussions that come up with the next item because we do have another item on here, which is a discussion consideration repopulation of affected fire areas. You know, the sheriff may want to participate in this as well. Subway's a calm stock, we pass this. Let's go ahead. Subway's a calm stock. We throw a comment, Mark.
Thank you very much for adding this to the agenda. Having in multiple areas, we have folks that are wondering when and how they're going to be able to repopulate their ones that are not in damage and be able to get into the areas to look at their homes that have been damaged. We're speaking, Brian, Sheriff Department, you're doing an unbelievable job here. They work it night to day. I know that. In particular, we have people in the Lower Lake area that are inundating many of us with calls, wondering when and how and what we could do. And we haven't been able to provide it with a timeline at that point and the sinking down in Calistoga, we were down there, we were hoping that today some of that would begin and it hasn't as of yet. So if you can bring us up to date or who actually gets to make that decision, we need to know that and when it's going to be made and when it's going to happen.
The repopulation discussion has been going on since as early as Tuesday. Of course, Wednesday, we had the rain event come through and really give us a lot of tremendous amount of relief from the fire. There was some current concern that with the, after the rain event had gone through, there'd be some drying out and heating up and some additional flare ups. And what I've seen, that doesn't seem to be the case. There seem to be still some smokes going on in the affected areas. One thing to keep in mind though is that because the fire is out and smoke's gone, doesn't mean that the hazards are gone. We're still dealing with all kinds of other hazards. There's falling trees. I was trapped on Anderson Springs Road by a falling tree. There's trees that are coming down across roadways. PGE has been tremendous in their efforts to, to get utilities and power restored to the areas. There's still a lot of hazard trees around their power lines and they're taking steps along with CAL FIRE to false those hazard trees so, so that they don't fall down and take down the lines that they've been spending all this time to re-put back up. In addition to that, there's concerns over the hazardous materials that are left behind after result of the fire, synthetic materials, asbestos concerns, ash pits, still some unseen active fires and smoldering events that are going on. So we really want to make sure that we'll never, we won't be able to eliminate all of those hazards. We want to make sure that we do everything that we reasonably can to mitigate as much as they can and combine that with an effort to educate the public when they return that they're entering into a hazardous area, notify them that they're entering at their own risk, make personal protective equipment available to them, or they make a recommendation or recommending to the public that you not sit through debris, but we know that human nature is, is that they want to go through and see what lines they have left. Let them know that when you do that, you're potentially exposing yourselves to some dangerous things. It might not be dangerous today, it might be a couple of years down the road. And so we're making personal protective equipment available for people free of charge if they choose to do that. There has been some movement on the repopulation. The repopulation started as of yesterday. It didn't impact anybody that lives in Lake County, but this is going to be a phased approach. We're not going to open, open the gates and yell, "All yell, ax and free" and have everybody run in there wholesale. We can't do that. There are still utility crews in there, there's still fire crews working hard. I think over 3,600 fire personnel are still in the area battling the fires in there. There's several hundred PGE trucks, I don't know how many AT&amp;T trucks, gas companies have an interest in getting people in there. And we introduced the 12,000, 15,000 or so displaced people back in the community. We can't do it all at one time, unfortunately. It's going to cause problems for the, those responding agencies as well as the firefighters. So we're taking a phased approach. The first phase was yesterday to get the people in various estates back home. I think, as I said, that doesn't help the people that are in Lake County, but it gave them an indication that things are progressing forward. I will tell you that 1,800, there's going to be an announcement as far as some, some opening of previously evacuated areas. We are not prepared to disclose what those areas are right now because I don't want to create a bunch of chaos and confusion before we have our resources in place and ready to handle that and make sure that people don't go beyond those evacuated areas and into the areas where we're still actively searching. Another thing that's important to realize is that we saw some people that aren't accounted for and we're still searching the fire areas for people. And though we've recovered some people that didn't make it, there still exists the concern that we might find more. And I wouldn't want to add that tragedy for somebody to go in and see something that they really shouldn't see on top of losing everything and seeing the damage that they're going to see anyway. So it's really a phased approach, taking many, many things into consideration. There is not a single, a single spoke in the wheel that's going to, going to cause this wheel to turn by itself. It's a lot of efforts coming together to make sure that everybody gets in, everybody gets in as quickly as possible, that everybody gets in as safe, safely as is reasonable possible.
Chair, do you get to make that decision as to which ones or is it a CAL FIRE decision?
It's a combined decision. We come together and talk and it's not simply law enforcement, it's not simply CAL FIRE. It's us, pardon me, working with utility companies, the gas companies. We know that particularly when we open up the south end of the county, there's going to be influx of people that are going to return to Lake County and not have anywhere to go. A lot of those people that have been staying in the shelter in Calistoga are going to have to stay in a shelter somewhere. So we're establishing and it should be ready to go by the time we make the, whatever notification that's going to affect that part of the county, that they will have a shelter here in Lake County that they can go to at the Twin Pine Casino. That's going to be co-located with the local assistance center so they're going to be able to go from the shelter very easily over to local assistance center and get information and help and updates on the, on the recovery information.
And for example, the one at 1,800, how will that get out to those that are in whatever affected area will be repopulated?
The information will be put out via press releases through our PIO in conjunction with press releases through the CAL FIRE PIO. One of the things that's very important to us working this is that we have a single unified message. So the message that's coming out from CAL FIRE is the same as the message that's coming out from the Office of Emergency Services, the same is coming out from the EOC and the same is coming out from the Sheriff's Office.
Can we put it out to Lake County News also?
They will, they will...
Website?
Yes, they will be notified...
Concurrently?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
It's, I will say it's never going to be as fast as everybody wants. And this is, this is one of the small steps forward that we're going to be taking in a very, very long journey.
Yes, it is long. We know that. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
I know it's been tireless.
This is, yeah. Those of us in law enforcement who got used to catch bad guys, not to respond to stuff like this, but you know, I, big hats off to my command team, starting with Under Sheriff. You see them working all the way down to every person in my department. We have all kinds of law enforcement, mutual aid coming in to help us from, from all parts of the state. And, you know, we're, it's a, it can't be said enough, it's a huge disaster, but I'm surrounded by professionals and, you know, when, when things are at their worst, professionals act their best and you're seeing the best that Lake County has to offer here at the Sheriff's Office.
Well, apparently there are some bad guys from another area that thought they could come in and take advantage and they were not.
We'll have, we'll have some...
They did not and there are going to be some more.
There's going to be some more. And what I'll say is we're not going to catch them all, but the ones we're catching, you're going to hear about it, you're going to see their pictures.
In every area, there's some people that never did leave. We're able, I couldn't. We were trapped in there. It would not be a real good idea for any bad guy to try to come in there because we will defend ourselves very well. And I know those that are out in those areas will. So bad guys be on notice. You're at serious risk.
Well, I think it's fair to say there's going to be all types, colors and stripes of predators, whether it be people looting from either in the area or out of the area, price gouging with hotels and local businesses that is...
We, yeah, we had some reports that there had been some reported price gouging, somebody that said they got a $300 hotel bill. We looked into that and it was a $300 hotel bill for three nights.
Okay.
So, I think those rumors are going around.
Completely reasonable.
Yeah, right now, that's, yeah, it's completely reasonable. Sheriff Harrington brings up a very good point. We have what I will call camouflage collar looters going around now, dressed in camouflage or black collar. We're also going to have blue collar looters coming around. We want to get the message out that there's going to be unlicensed contractors, there are going to be unscrupulous public adjusters trying to take advantage of people. And so our, one of our, our next phases in this operation, this recovery effort is to get the word out to people that not only are there looters running around, they're going to burn your home, there's people that will try to take advantage of you. Make sure that you're dealing with a licensed contractor when you're contracting for repair services or cleanup services. Make sure you check that they have insurance. Make sure that if you're, if you're dealing with a public adjuster, that you really, really need to deal with a public adjuster because a lot of times the, your insurance policies will, you're already paying for that service with your insurance payments. So...
You're taking the exact words and sentiments of what I'm communicating.
Sorry, Sheriff Harrington.
No, you do it a lot faster than I do. That's good. And I appreciate, I know that I've been inundating you with text messages and sometimes I know when I don't get an answer, you're swamped. And it's probably best, because when I was down there today, that's what they want to know, that you know the sentiments and the polls down there about repopulation. And it's probably best just not to even give a timeframe, but let them know that we're erring on the side of caution. There's a lot of moving parts. In fact, I don't know if my, is that, is that John Van Neck back there?
No.
No? It was John Van Neck. Anyways, I had a conversation with John and other people that have called and their focus was specifically on, on point. And that's something maybe we can work out with Rick and planning is there are going to be people coming in that are not licensed, that do not have the skill set. We got to protect the community when we build back up that... North Coast Builders Exchange is going to come on and do a seminar on that. Perfect.
Yes, they are. You got to see those, see text, you know?
It's going to be a lot of work moving forward. Subway's a still?
Isn't there a 10% rule under state of emergency? Is that right?
And the Business Professions Club makes, so the, I don't know if it's a misdemeanor felony, but it's a crime to charge more than 10% during a state of emergency over the normal going rate for essential business services.
Who sets that normal rate? Is that your own normal rate or is that some standard rule?
My normal rate's different than what they...
Well, my understanding is that once a state of emergency has been declared, they can't increase it over that 10% from that base rate at the time. So with that, that normal rate and then once the declaration is made, they have to stay within that 10%. Anything greater than that, it becomes...
So while we get that out there as well, people realize that maybe we have some protection and can add some questions.
Okay, so is there any members of the public staff that want to speak about this item 4.2 for repopulation, the affected areas of the fire? I have one more.
I have one more.
Okay.
Two more things, actually. Back to the price gouging, the insurance commissioner was on same today visiting Lake County. We have his full support with Department of Insurance to, to help us out with any investigation to any of those things that are out. The other thing is, we've also made a request for the National Guard to send in a company of military police soldiers to help on in our local law enforcement. What they're gonna be doing, I don't know if you recall, we, we've started some escorts into the areas for people to check on their animals. While it was well-intentioned, it really, really drained our resources, our staffing, and it was very labor-intensive, it took a lot of our resources away from the looting patrols and the efforts to, to get things restored back to normal. So we're only able to do that for two days, there was hundreds of people that didn't get to go in there and recover their animals or just see their belongings. So we're having a company of military police soldiers come in from Pittsburgh to help us with that, there's gonna be 50 teams able to escort people back to their residences to look around. Once we get everybody accommodated with that, they're ready to transition to whatever other services we need.
Catching bad guys, too.
Well, I don't know if we'll have catching bad guys, but it's gonna free up a lot of our state, county, and local law enforcement officers to do that. When we set up these roadblocks, where we position people, a lot of people are being kept out of their houses in the unaffected area, because if we move the roadblock beyond, to a point where they can get home, it opens up the evacuated area for people just to go wild in there, because we don't have enough personnel to close off all the access points. This is gonna be a tremendous help in allowing us to do that during the next week or so.
And they will be here when?
Tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM. They'll be here tonight, they'll be ready tomorrow at 8:00.
The only thing, Sheriff, that, that I would add, and it's just more for the public benefit, and you've seen some of this kind of media coverage that took place regarding animals and rescue evacuation, is that from my personal opinion, and just my experience in this whole crisis and previous fires of this year, is that there's a chain of command, and that if you don't follow the chain of command, people's lives are at risk, people are at risk of injury, and that lack of coordination creates chaos. And so my message, and trying to quell and deal with other people and organizations that wanna help, which is very noble, is that they need to be plugged in with the appropriate lead agency, whether it be the sheriff, EOC, OES, or animal control, it's animal-related, and not just show up. Be coordinated through the County of Lake and our staff, Office of Road, related infrastructure related, Scott DeLeon, and that is how the chain of command and how we keep our organizational efforts intact. And I just wanna express my appreciation, there's a lot of eyes on us from the outside that don't understand what's going on, and it's quite easy for those people to judge and not be involved, or volunteer and cyberbully and do all the things they do. We all know, and our board knows, that how hard each and every one of you are working, and I see it day in and day out, I see the communications, and I will do everything that I can to stand by you, no matter what the outside judgment or perception may be. So I thank you, applaud all, each and every one of you for all your work. Is there any other statements or as a console?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Sheriff, when, when an area is opened up, how does it, does it personally have to show ID to get in, or how's that come?
We're, yes, we're, if we're opening up, there's different levels of opening areas up. We can open them up to everybody, we can open it up to residents only, or we can just open up an emergency and essential responders. If we're opening up to residents only, we make people show ID proof of residency. That's gonna be one of the many challenges that we have, because some people have a Middletown PO box on their driver's license.
That's me.
Yeah, may, may live, not exactly a Middletown. So those are gonna be some challenges that, that they're gonna present themselves. There's been no shortage of challenges that we didn't anticipate that came up in here, and we deal with it.
Thank you. Real quick, is there anything that staff wants to speak to on this for repopulation or this reentry, these scandals we have? The board, or?
The cleanup?
Yeah.
People's are coming in.
So these are gonna be distributed through, everybody, our staff is getting these out then, is that?
Distributed to people as they come in, we're also distributing them at the evacuation shelters, and we're gonna have fixed points next to the notification signs with boxes available for the people who retrieve those as well.
You got those here?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and then I, and I think where we're heading and talking to, I don't know if we have this on for next week, but when we talk about repopulation and maybe coordination of some type of resource center in South County, and I know I've talked to Rick, and we have the extra item for the zoning ordinance, is that on next week as well? No?
Still trying to get to it.
All right. We'll get to that in the next meeting. Anything else before we wrap up today?
One last question. I was informed that there was supposed to have been some community meeting in Lower Lake today, I didn't know anything about it.
Tomorrow.
What time tomorrow?
3:00.
3:00 for high school?
Yeah.
Got it, thank you. I'll be there. Thank you all for being here. Yes, I'm sorry. Come on up.
Yeah.
I apologize. Please come up to the lectern there and state your first and last name for the record.
My name is Pat Trujillo.
Good to have you.
Hi, I live on Harrington Flat, and I hear that it's pretty safe, the insurance adjuster went up there. Thank you for letting me go up, and I saw my cab the other day, thank you. I don't wanna start crying. Okay, but I've heard that it's really safe up there, we have underground wiring. Can I go home? Please.
As I said, I don't know exactly where you live, but one of the things.
Two blocks from Adam's. Of course.
To be exact.
Yeah.
Now you know.
Ma'am, I, I would love to have everybody able to go home. The thing is, if I let you in, I, I open up the possibility of people going around those backroads, there's probably a dozen backroads, you can be back to many areas. We're already, we're running around, it's like chasing pretty cats, trying to catch these looters, and I don't wanna introduce more avenues for these looters.
I'm so glad you're getting them.
We're doing, we can't.
I, I can help you.
Plenty of people offer their own solutions.
I'll get as many stores as you do.
Yeah.
So just know that we, we truly recognize this as a concern, we're, we're working to get you home as soon as you can.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I wish I could get you home tonight.
I wish you could, too. But thank you very much, I know you guys were so busy, and it meant so much being able to go up, find my cat, I didn't find the cat, but I was able to feed her, and I was able to see that my house was okay. So thank you.
Okay.
Okay. You can let me know as soon as you need me done.
Any other member of the public? Rick, please come up, state your first and last name for the record.
You.
Rick Hamilton. And, Sheriff, I wanna thank you for everything you've done for the county, continue to do for the county. Big wishes to you and your crew, you do a great job. Sorry for walking in late, Lake County OES posted this on their Facebook page about 10 minutes ago, so I didn't know, wasn't aware of it until I saw it. So repopulation, I'm sorry, this little conversation, I mean, you can tell me later, after the meeting's over.
1,800 hours, we're gonna have some information about areas that are being repopulated tonight.
Okay, thank you.
6:00 PM, I'm sorry.
I got you.
6:00 PM.
I got you, thank you, sir. Thank you, Rick. Betsy Con.
Good afternoon, everybody. Betsy Con from the record. I want you to know that KPFZ has been on the air 24 hours a day taking phone calls and giving out information, we have a list being distributed through all the agencies, shelters, and churches, and we are getting constantly called about this very issue. Every time I get more information, it goes out on the air, and we really, really appreciate everything you're doing, so thank you so much.
We appreciate you having this information, changes literally minute by minute, so we appreciate you doing that for us.
Exactly.
Well, I just, I'd like to thank the sheriff also, and all of you, and everybody else that's been doing all this work to help everyone that's, you know, that's displaced. But at 0800, I mean, 01,800 hours, I just thought it might be nice to say for the people that are watching, how do they get this information? How do I find out whether I can go home? Is there a phone number I can call?
Listen, KPFZ. KPFZ, KPFZ, we're gonna have press releases going out, Lake County News, our media officer has a list of probably, I'm guessing, 200 media sources, everything from NBC Nightly News all the way down to the local.
But I'm in my car, I don't have a.
We're not in Lightport, listen, KPFZ.
Have you signed up for our NEXOL account?
I'll get over that, sir.
Okay, we're gonna put it out via NEXOL, you can check CAL FIRE website.
But what if I just have a phone?
I'll call you.
Mike, Mike, you can NEXOL it yourself.
Well, listen, KPFZ, Ed.
My cell phone.
Yeah.
Well, I'm also on your phone, you have web access, right?
Well, this is for all the folks watching, too.
So CAL FIRE, cdfdata.fire.ca.gov.
They won't have.
You have releases.
No, they're not.
If you want instantaneous, then you need to make the calls, like you and I.
Well, yeah.
Mike, why don't you state the radio station names, I don't want you to walk along.
33435 is the studio number.
Ed, I'll talk to you about it afterwards.
Okay. Anybody else in the public? Mike?
We'll also have the information as soon as we get it on BiCoastal Media stations, we have eight radio stations that cover the market, including three Hispanic stations. And they'll be 98.3, 99.5, 105.9, 103.3, 1270 AM, 96.5 FM, 1240, and 1260 AM.
Can you state your name for the record, Tim?
I'm sorry, Mike Wilson with BiCoastal Media.
Appreciate it. Any other member of the public? Anything else, Matt, or Anita, or Josh?
Okay.
This will conclude our emergency meeting. Thank you all for being here and all your diligent work and service, appreciate it.